Craig. I'd like to call to order the Maryville Town Council meeting for Tuesday, February 14th, running a little late at 6:35. Please stand for the invocation and the Pledge of Allegiance. Chief Petrush in absence of Pastor Anderson.
He's here.
Oh, Pastor Anderson's here? I'm sorry. Pastor Anderson?
Let's bow our heads. Most gracious Father, we thank you for this opportunity to serve the people in the town of Maryville, and we ask you for continued wisdom, not only with today's agenda, but in the decision makers in the times ahead, that we may bless and prosper the posterity of the people of the town. Have your way in this place, and we give you our praise in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Mr. Gernsy, roll call, please.
Span.
President.
Hardaway.
Here.
Miano.
Here.
Garalcheck.
Here.
Baron.
Here.
Here. I would be remiss, and I apologize, to Pastor Anderson, if you folks could please keep the town of Griffith in your prayers. Many of you may know that they lost their clerk treasurer over the weekend to a tragic passing, so if you could keep the town, the town council, and Mr. Broderick's family in your prayers, I'd appreciate it. Also, I'd like to welcome our new town attorney, Mr. John Bishemi, who will be handling town council and redevelopment commission. Also in the audience, we have Mr. Mike Deppi, who will be handling the unsafe buildings and our town court violations. At a special town council meeting, the council also approved Susan Severnson to handle the police commission, and Mr. William Touche to handle the planning commission and BZA, and finally, James Meyer to handle the stormwater duties for the town of Maryville for 2012. So I'd like to welcome all the attorneys on board. Mr. Bishemi.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Isn't that Susan in the back?
Is Susan in the back? Hi, Susan is in the back.
She's in the back.
All right. Under petitions, communications, and remonstrations, we have a proclamation for Random Acts of Kindness. Mr. Fink?
I'll go ahead and read it in the record if you all wish. Random Acts of Kindness Month, whereas daily acts of kindness of most citizens of Maryville often goes unrecognized, and whereas by recognizing these daily acts of kindness during the month of February, citizens of Maryville will be aware of the importance of being kind to others throughout the year, and whereas by recognizing these acts of kindness during February, everyone will be encouraged to participate in making this world a kinder, safer, and better place to live. And whereas here are a few acts of kindness ideas to help Maryville a better place to live. Send floor arrangements to senior centers, nursing homes, hospitals, etc., near your office. Collect goods throughout Random Acts of Kindness Week or during the year for a food bank or shelter. Give coupons for discounted or free goods to schools to use as incentives for the kindness programs. And donate a percentage of your revenue for one day to a group in need. Whereas science has shown that people's day-to-day actions and kindness toward others have a significant effect on our well-being, and whereas one study shows that ten scientifically proven strategies for happiness include savoring everyday moments, avoiding comparisons, putting money low on the priority list, having meaningful goals, taking initiative at work, making new friends and treasuring family, smiling even if you don't feel like it, saying thank you like you mean it, and lastly, being altruistic and giving as a daily part of your life. Now therefore, the Maryville Town Council hereby proclaims the month of February 2012 as Random Acts of Kindness Month, and calls upon its citizens of Maryville to participate by spreading kindness and practicing respect, generosity, patience, and consideration of others at all times in order to create a better, kinder, safer, and more peaceful world.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Mr. Whiting, seconded by Mr. Garalcheck to pass a proclamation on Random Acts of Kindness Month. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next proclamation is Women's History Month. Mr. Fink?
I'll read it in the record. Women's History Month, whereas American women have ever raised class and ethnic background have made historic contributions to the growth and strength of our nation in countless recorded and unrecorded ways, and whereas American women have played and continue to play a critical economic, cultural, and social role in every sphere of life of the nation by constituting a significant portion of the labor force working inside and outside of the home. And whereas American women have been leaders not only in securing their own rights of suffrage and equal opportunity, but also in the abolitionist movement, emancipation movement, the industrial labor movement, the civil rights movement, and other movements, especially the peace movement, which create a more fair and just society for all. And despite these contributions, the role of American women in history has been consistently overlooked and undervalued in the literature, teaching, and study of American history. Now therefore, the Maryville Town Council does hereby proclaim March 2012 as Women's History Month in the town of Maryville, and calls upon the residents of Maryville to hold programs, ceremonies, and activities to acknowledge women's accomplishments.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Hardaway, seconded by Mr. Span to approve the proclamation for Women's History Month in the month of March 2012. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. We have accounts payable, register voucher approval, February 14th, 2012, and the approval of the town council meeting minutes for January 24th, and also the special town council meeting of February 9th. Pleasure of the council?
So moved. Second.
Motion by Mr. Hardaway, seconded by Mr. Garalcheck to approve the consent agenda as presented. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Standing committees, budget and finance. Mr. Garalcheck.
Well, the budget and finance, we had an insurance meeting tonight, so we might be saving a potential of $277,000, but it's not all said and done, so that's the only thing I had to report under budget and finance.
Mr. Gernsy, anything else?
Yep.
Okay. Public Works, Mrs. Miano?
Recently, our town has been making moves to get our buildings established to be ADA qualified. There has been some construction in the washrooms. There will be reconstruction of some of the counters to make our counters lower for the people that have physical challenges and are confined to a wheelchair. There will be doors that will be reconditioned. There will also be signs in braille. We've had, correct me if I'm wrong, Bruce, over 50 sidewalk accommodations, sidewalk cutouts in our town, about?
Yeah, that was done, that work was done last summer.
Last summer, yes. And they're going to be checking out the streets and making sure everyone who lives in our town, comes to our town, and travels within our town, has the rights afforded to them under the Americans with Disability Act. That is my report.
Anything else under Public Works, folks? All right. Seeing none, council affairs, Mr. Span?
Nothing yet. Nothing at this time.
Okay. Personnel policy, employee benefits, Mr. Garalcheck?
I already touched base on the health insurance renewal. They'll be back with us next Wednesday with solid numbers.
Public safety, Mr. Whiting?
No report.
Parks and Recreation, Mr. Span?
Last meeting, we talked about parks and recreation. We mentioned some of the activities that's going on for the parks. When you get your talk of the town, you can see all these activities are in the paper now. I highlighted on four of these activities last meeting, the casino, it's just Chicago stepping, ballroom dancing, and aerobics. We also have a yoga class, May 14th through July the 16th. There's a Cubs game, June 2012 at 5:30. Residential cost is $65. Non-residence is $70. I'm very interested in the tulip festival, because I'm a gardener. That's May the 6th. Time is 7 o'clock. Cost of residence is $40. Non-residential is $45. I hear that's a pretty nice shingdik to go to. I'm in the gardening, Gernsy. Also, I didn't realize we had the kids zone that's coming. They get to go to camp. In a camper, they get to go on field trips. I think that's pretty nice. You got June the 8th, 15th, 22nd, and 29th. So it's starting like June the 4th, June the 6th, all the way up into those dates. And you have your July dates, week 6 in July, July 9th, week 7, July 16th, week 8, July 23rd, week 9, July 30th. Then you got two weeks in August, well, four weeks in August. August the 6th, August the 10th, August the 13th, and August the 17th. That seems like something that's real nice to the community, you know? I'm very impressed about that. So that's my report. Thank you.
Mr. Span to Mr. Spires, we did discuss, Bruce, and we probably ought to have a Parks Committee meeting on the CNO, the next phase of the CNO. Do you want to do that through a Parks Committee meeting, some of the upgrades we talked about this morning?
Yes, that would be great. There is a meeting planned a week from tomorrow with Butler, Furman, and Seifert, like a pre-designed meeting, so if we can do something before then...
A week from tomorrow?
Yeah, a week from tomorrow. So that gives us a week that we can sit down and finalize that out, and then I will present that to them for their design.
You'll call me with a date? You gonna pick a date?
Whatever. Whenever you'd like to do it, I guess.
I'm advertised, you know? I'm pretty willy, you know?
Can I look at my schedule tomorrow, and I'll give you a call, and then we can have Howard advertise?
Okay. Anything else under Parks and Recreation? Environmental Affairs, Mrs. Baron?
Yeah, I believe Mr. Lake has a presentation prepared.
Yeah, I just want to go over the wireless LCD. First of all, this is here for not only our use, but any other department that wishes to use it, including the courts. And so part of my mission here today is to kind of test it out, show you some of the visuals of things I've been talking about, and not all-inclusive, just touch base on some of them, just to give you some of the ideas of some things that are going on. This actually is our communications chart for the stormwater utility. It encompasses other departments and individuals that are a part of the, what we call the minimum control measures for our compliance for Rule 13. And actually, this model is used all over now across the state by all the MS4s. IDM actually made it mandatory, they liked it so much. Taft Street, we met with Darren Olson today to go over some of the supplemental drainage we want to include with this, which includes a portion of Independence Hill, that'll be a separate contract. But we purchased the two parcels of land to do the ponds right here, down here, south of 73rd, and up here north by the golf course crossing the cemetery, so that we are now all pretty much on schedule as planned, and it's going to be a two-phase approach. Like I said, our portion is going to be the end dot, the other portion's going to be off the right away that we can initiate this summer. 54th Court, talked a lot about this before. This is going to be a rebid in the spring. This is in partnership with Public Works. Initially, we're going to do a pervious pavement project, but we found out that the soils were clay, they couldn't support the area underneath there for drainage purposes, so doing pervious concrete there wouldn't make much sense, so we're going to go with concrete. Where in the biomediation area, which is basically a rain garden in the center, it's going to include some benches and some pervious walkways and some trees, and it's going to be very aesthetically pleasing, as well as functional for stormwater treatment. We have a coastal grant that's going to pay for the rain garden portion. It's pending now, but it's been submitted, and Mike Molnar's been in touch with me about the project, so I think we have an excellent chance of getting funded. Talked a little about some of the small projects like 55th and Delaware. This was a project where, again, we partnered with Public Works. We regraded the street to have it drain into this area. We created this grass swale. So not only are we fixing the road here, but now we've got a nice grass conveyance here, which is going to treat the road runoff. And so we kind of combined our efforts and costs shared on this. And the other benefit is for public safety. There was some areas there that were icing over, so we ended up solving several issues with this project. So I want to thank Bruce for partnering with us on that. The stormwater infrastructure mapping project, we're working with Robinson Engineering. They're going to do survey-grade mapping. They initiated it, a meeting with them this week again to see where they're at. You know, our current maps were about 60% accurate at best, so this data's going to be utilized for master plan, and then also when we have our IDM audits, this is going to give us like the highest level of compliance for that. So we want to, you know, achieve those goals there and, you know, have this data for our master plan. Like I said, we have a series of small drainage projects. As things come up, we're going to do a lot of these in the spring, but we usually do a little rendition or drawing. I come up with this in the RGIS. Some of it entails some minor engineering, and we work through it at minimal cost to try and get the job done, so that we can alleviate a lot of these small drainage issues, and most of these are in partnership with the Public Works Department. Our camera truck, we received that. We're going to have an operational training session at the end of this month, and the camera truck's going to follow the whole mapping project, so we'll have it mapped. It'll all be on the computer. Again, this data's going to be used for the stormwater master plan and to prioritize maintenance, so we're going to have a lot of, that thing's going to be running nonstop. House Bill 1264, we talked about this before. We actually rallied and solicited support. We held key stakeholder meetings, and I was asked to compile and query GIS data. I went to the county and worked with the GIS department, and we came up with this tiered billing system. I think, Ron, you had mentioned this before about the tiered billing system, and that's what the group agreed on. And so this is being brought downstate. We have a revised House Bill, so Senator Rogers is going to be presenting this down there, and we hope all goes well. So some of the key features were the tiered billing system, so the closer you are to the actual levy, the higher you pay. Any surplus funds, because they didn't have a maintenance budget for this project, so any surplus funds that are generated will go back to the respective communities and the percent that they pay into, so that we could reap some benefits locally for local drainage projects based on that. So that was another change, a key change in the bill. The Stormwater Resource Center, we have a complete program report from CDM Smith. They actually have a compliance schedule where we'd be in the building by the end of December. This is just a quick sketch-up model. It's going to include, you know, the green roof, the cisterns, the building's going to have an R rating that's going to assist with energy conservation. The lighting's going to be LED. It's going to use a lot of reflective lighting. I'm working on a lot of grants to do some of the grounds. Some of it's going to include some constructed wetlands, some riparian buffer zones, rain gardens, utility plantings, and things like that. Maybe some pervious parking in here as well. But we're going to seek more grant funding to try to supplement our budget with those exterior features for the grounds. You kind of see another visual, and this is just a rough drawing of it, of the center. It kind of accommodates this flow back down to, there's a ditch down, or a channel down here, a stream. So we could take school groups in here and teach them, do Riverwatch training down by the stream, have some other outdoor labs, and make it more of an inclusive learning center as well as operations. So this is the backside where the operations would be, and we'd have connectivity to Public Works right through here, and then we'd have all our equipment and stuff stored back in through here. You'll hear more about that in the future. They're at about 30% design right now. We talked a bit before about Emerald Ashbauer. I went out and GPS locations of the infected trees over there at 86 and Broadway. The red are the infected, the orange are questionable, and the green are the ones, the ash trees that are nearby. We received a grant for our comprehensive mitigation response, includes public tree inventory, treatment of selected trees, removal of infested ones, and street tree replacement. And we made some localized brochures to get the awareness level up. We're going to print more of these and get them out this spring. Also, I mentioned before, I'm involved in publications for the statewide committee. This is example one I did. I'm in charge of about five or six different brochures, so they hopefully will be all done by midsummer and out to all over Indiana. We've been getting more and more into mapping. This is a draft subdivision map I came up with. Be working more with Dorinda on this and refining this, so we can get it as accurate as we possibly can, and then make that available to everybody. I got all the flood data from FEMA, and they gave it to me in GIS format, so I was able to overlay that and bring that up. I get a lot of calls from individuals. Am I in a flood zone, am I not? I got this letter from FEMA. So we talk about the letter of map amendment process, the LOMA process, and we're going to put these maps on our webpage, so then we can point people there, because otherwise going to FEMA.gov, it's kind of hard to navigate through some of those portions of their website. And part-time compliance, meet Joe Fish. He's an experienced stormwater compliance inspector. He assists with the ordinance enforcement and stormwater field assessments and inspections. He's going to help with the audits. He already has a stack of violations that he's already been out in the field and hammered away on, so he's not into selective enforcement. So if they're in the wrong, they're in the wrong, and that's it. So he's a great asset, and I'm glad he's on board. And happy Valentine's Day. If I have any questions?
I got one thing for you. 54th Court, 53rd Court, I'm sorry, on the west side. Bruce could probably fill you in on that one. It drains off into a retention pond, but the court floods when we have heavy rains, and that was one back in '08 when we had the major flood.
Yeah.
And we had to boat people out of there, because the water, for some reason, goes out very slow.
Yeah.
So if you take a look at that, I appreciate it.
We're going to have an under-drain and catch basin in there, so it's going to be sloped inward into the center, and that's going to be kind of like a detention facility.
But this is a different court you're talking about.
Oh, I thought you meant 54th Court.
No, this is 53rd Court, on the west side.
I'll take him over there and show him.
Yeah. If you take a look at that one, it's, you know, and you'll meet a guy that's going to be very interested.
Yeah, maybe we'll add that to our list of small drainage projects, and we'll look at that.
See anything about Clay Street up there? Clay Street, my property floods every time it rains.
Isn't that Holbert?
What's that?
No?
Oh. It's Holbert.
Gene lives in Maryville. I can test it, I can't get down Clay Street when it floods.
Yeah, okay.
And Matt? Oh, I'm sorry.
What do you do out there? Nothing?
Well, come to our stormboard meeting, and we'll sit down with you and go over the whole situation.
I've called the guys out a couple times. Bud's been out there. Have you been out there?
I have not.
Bud has, and Bud knows about it.
Okay.
I mean, my field to my right floods, but my neighbor, he floods out every time. They just, there's supposed to be a natural drain down there by the railroad, and Bruce come out and alleviated some of it, but still not drained the way it's supposed to be.
Yeah, we'll definitely have to look at that then and go through it. And once we get our master plan in place, that's going to prioritize all our projects. You can't have enough money to take care of every single scenario, but we'll definitely go out there, take a look at it, and come up with a plan for you.
People in town want that water problem solved first.
Matt, and I have another question. Back in March, I gave Bud and Bruce property in Southmore Park, specifically 276 West 78th. And there was another gentleman here end of January that you spoke to regarding his properties doing the same thing with water, just laying there and getting backed up. And three homes in Savannah Ridge was also, and I don't see anything up there for Savannah Ridge or Southmore Park.
Like I said, this wasn't an all-inclusive presentation, otherwise I could sit here for four hours and discuss all the drainage issues in Maryville. The Savannah Ridge situation, we are going to camera all those lines once we get everybody trained. We have to see in there and see what's going on in order to alleviate the situation, otherwise it's guesswork, and if we hire a lot of, you know, engineering to be done on some guesswork, whereas if we camera it, we could probably figure out some of those other issues and alleviate them that way. But I would definitely encourage anybody to attend our stormboard meetings.
Well, here's what I'll suggest as council president. Matt, Howard, from starting in February for the workshop, we have a particular issue to resolve with the insurance, with Tom and personnel. March, Matt, plan on being at the council workshop in March, and then we're going to put a slot for stormwater on every future town council workshop, so we can have the more detailed, longer discussions at the workshop, if you guys don't mind, as opposed to the council floor, if that's okay with the remainder of the council. We'll just add Matt and Bud. Either or, both can come if need be, and update the council on. I'll talk to you after the meeting. I saw one property on there I want to bring to your attention on the locale in my area, Ward 6, but Howard, if you would do that, and then we'll invite him to come to the workshop and give more detail, and then if you guys have got projects you want to ask about, we'll have a little bit more time to go through those.
Yeah, we'll have to prioritize those, because, you know, when we look at that...
Right. Yep, okay. Anything else under environmental affairs? Okay. Seeing none, elections and public relations, Mrs. Miano?
No report.
I have one. Mrs. Miano? Oh, go ahead, Rich.
I got one. A girls' high school basketball team. They went undefeated, even though they lost in the semifinals of the sectional. They were undefeated throughout the entire season, and they hit that bump in the road last weekend against Michigan City. But I think that they should be commended again for an outstanding season. Coach Gover and the entire team did, they made Maryville proud once again this year. So I just want to make sure that we acknowledge that and send them something, so that it's a little, we're thankful about it.
One item that I have for the council's benefit, and I apologize for not announcing this earlier, and it's very late, but Thursday, some of you may have seen, we're going to be doing a joint town, city address. Mayor Uran, myself, Dr. Lux, and Dr. Eineman from the Crown Point Schools. The chamber is, and the city of Crown Point are pretty much sponsoring it through the Crossroads Regional Chamber. It's from 11 to 1 at the Mackey Ballroom down on the square. I'll need to get with Joe and Dorinda and Howard and get some information, so that we've each got about 15 minutes, and then there's questions and answers. But we did it here last year, the chamber wanted to put it on kind of as a joint venture. I know in the past, I know I've gone to the chamber luncheons, Rich has gone, previous presidents, Mr. Shuteck, and given the State of the Town address, usually at the chamber luncheon, the last couple years they've wanted to try this new thing. So Thursday at 11 o'clock at the Mackey Ballroom, there'll be the joint city-town, State of the Town address.
What date is that, Sean?
I'm sorry, Howard?
February...
It's this Thursday, the 16th.
16th, yeah.
I don't know, Rich, if there's what the charge is. Howard, if you want to give the chamber a call and maybe send out an email to the rest of the council, and again, I apologize for the lateness, ladies and gentlemen, that's my fault. Okay. Nothing else under elections, Mrs. Miano?
No.
Okay. Economic Development, Mr. Garalcheck?
No report.
All right. Utility liaison, Mr. Whiting?
No report.
All right. Town government reorganization, Mrs. Miano?
No report.
All right. General orders, ordinances, first reading ordinance, ordinance 1206, an ordinance of the town of Maryville, Lake County, Indiana, appropriate additional monies within the Police Property Seizures Fund for the town of Maryville, Lake County, Indiana, for the year 2012, not incurred in the current budget. The additional appropriation is $17,000.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Mr. Whiting, seconded by Mr. Garalcheck to approve ordinance 1206 on first reading. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, Mr. Gernsy, roll call vote?
I beg, what? Take a vote call. Roll call vote, yes.
Yes.
Hardaway.
Yep.
Yes.
Garalcheck.
Yes.
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 Yes. Motion carries, 7-0. Ordinance 1207, on first reading, an ordinance of the town of Maryville, Lake County, Indiana, creating a new line item for the town hall budget retroactive to January 1st, 2012, and transferring funds in the town of Maryville, Lake County, Indiana for the year 2012, not included in the current budget. The total increase is $18,000. The total decrease is the same, the net effect is zero.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Garalcheck, seconded by Mrs. Miano, to approve ordinance 1207 on first reading. Any discussion? Any discussion? Seeing none, Mr. Gurnsey, roll call?
Yes.
Hardaway.
Yep.
Miano.
Yes.
Guralcheck.
Yes.
Whiting.
Yes.
Yes, motion carries. Second reading ordinance, ordinance is twelve oh-two, an ordinance of the Town of Maryville, Lake County, Indiana, transferring monies of the two thousand twelve budget within certain categories of the Planning and Building Department.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Hardaway, seconded by Mrs. Miano to approve Ordinance twelve oh-two on second reading. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, is there any public comment? Seeing none, Mr. Gurnsey, roll call?
Span.
Yes.
Hardaway.
Yep.
Miano. Yes.
Guralcheck.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, motion carries. Ordinance twelve oh-three, an ordinance of the Town of Maryville, Lake County, Indiana, transferring monies of the two thousand twelve budget within certain categories of the Fire and Hazmat Department.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Whiting, seconded by Mr. Hardaway to approve Ordinance twelve oh-three on second reading. Is there any discussion of the council? Seeing none, is there any public comment? Seeing none, Mr. Gurnsey, roll call?
Span.
Yes.
Hardaway.
Yes.
Miano. Yes.
Guralcheck.
Yes.
Whiting.
Yes.
Yes, motion carries, seven zero. Ordinance twelve oh-five on second reading, an ordinance of the Town of Maryville, ordinance of the Maryville Town Council, excuse me, approving the Maryville Fire Protection Territories Board Resolution, hiring a deputy chief for the Maryville Fire Department.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Whiting, seconded by Mr. Guralcheck to approve Ordinance twelve oh-five on second reading. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, is there any public comment? Seeing none, Mr. Gurnsey, roll call?
Span.
Yes.
Hardaway.
Yep.
Miano. Yes.
Guralcheck.
Yes.
Whiting.
Yes.
Yes, motion carries, seven zero. We have no resolutions, and we have no BZA action, Dorinda? No? Any old business? Any new business?
I, I got one thing. I probably should have said this someplace else, but I'd like to commend Planning Department and Howard. We had a semi-blite hearing last Tuesday, and Howard was the judge, and he did an excellent job in representing the town and getting to the crust of the matter and helping the people to understand what needs to be done in the town if they plan on standing here and do business. So I'd need to commend Howard and Dorinda publicly for that. Thank you.
That was your, one we've seen the pictures of?
Is that the contractor, Rich?
No, this was the guy that owns the railroad salvage place on the...
Yeah, that's the one we've seen the pictures of.
Fifty-four forty-nine Broadway.
Okay.
Mr. Peddick?
Yes, Mr. Span?
We'd like to talk about the rental ordinance at, so if we get some time at the next executive meeting?
It'd be an open, it would be an open meeting. May I suggest a Council Affairs meeting, Mr. President, at five thirty Tuesday before the Town Council meeting? That would be Tuesday, the twenty-eighth, at five thirty, if there are any, if there are no other...
We need a health insurance meeting, probably.
That's right.
Tom?
Yes.
Tom, we need, we need an hour for that meeting or a half hour? That'll be...
Not certain on that at this time.
Let's give it an hour.
Health insurance, an hour? Let's, if, if it's okay, let's do a five o'clock then. Council Affairs will give the, the registration ordinance a half hour. We got a lot to go through over the next few months to get this thing implemented and to go over the issues to see if the council wants to move forward, so we can do a half hour and, and talk about some key issues.
I would recommend, obviously, with, with all the new legal counsel in place, Mr. Span, as you mentioned, you're retired. With you and Howard probably getting together with John sometime before that Council Affairs meeting and brief John as to what the intent is, what we're trying to accomplish, the philosophy, the policy, all that good stuff, I know you and Howard have...
Not have to go in front of BZA and the Plan Commission, or the Plan Commission.
That's probably something we'll have to have John research as to, I, by state statute, if we need that, or what we need to, that needs to go forward to those, those entities. Probably Plan Commission, depending on where we put it in the code, where, how we codify it.
Involved with that too.
Yep, okay. Any other new business?
So did I hear five o'clock, we'll do a Council Affairs meeting on the twenty-eighth, five to five thirty? Is that what I heard?
That's up to Mr. Span, that's his committee.
Yeah.
Very good, five to five thirty, Council Affairs.
All right.
And then five thirty Insurance.
Is that, are you officially calling that meeting, Mr. Guralcheck?
Yes.
All right, five thirty Personnel.
For the insurance.
And that's also on the twenty-eighth, which will come under announcements. Is there any pub, anything else for new business for the council? At this time, we'll open up the floor for public comment. You'll have three minutes, please state your name and address and approach the microphone. Any public comment? Any public comment? All right. Sorry about that. Announcements, there will be a short Town Council Workshop after this meeting, in approximately five minutes, if we can do that. Town Hall will be closed on Monday, February twentieth, in Observance of Presidents' Day. The Senior Health Fair, Monday, February twentieth, at Town Hall. Is that still taking place, Mrs. Miano, even though we're closed?
Yes, even though the offices are closed, the building will be opened. We have added hearing tests, we've also added bone density, and this is free to our seniors. There will be blood pressure checks and glucose monitoring and hearing, I think I said hearing, yes. It'll be going on.
All right. Plan Commission meeting, Tuesday, February twenty-first, at six thirty, Dorinda? As Mr. Guralcheck announced, Personnel Policy Employee Benefits Executive Session Meeting, Wednesday, February twenty-second, at five o'clock.
It's not an executive session.
It's not an executive session?